Meeting, I'll begin by doing a roll call vote, please. Jason Beebe, are you present?
Yeah, I'm present.
Janet Hutchinson?
Janet's here.
Thank you. Patricia Youngman?
Patricia's here.
Gail Merritt?
I'm here.
Jeff Papke?
Here.
Teresa Rumble?
Here.
Thank you, and please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to begin tonight by acknowledgement of the demonstrations from last Saturday. As I'm sure everybody is aware, our police department has been overwhelmingly supported by the community. I would also like to personally thank the police department, Chief Dale Cummins, and all his officers, Sheriff John Gottlieb, the Crete County Sheriff's Office, and the assistance of the Bend Police Department for ensuring that Saturday's event was safe for all involved and the community. I'd also like to recognize our city manager, Steve Forrester, and the other community leaders like District Attorney Wade Whiting for their efforts last week. Many perspectives were shared on Saturday that are important, and it is also important that we, as a city, have these conversations. We did have a visitor, a visitor request for the council prior to last week's demonstration. That person is on the agenda in visitors' appearances. And with that, I would like to ask if there are any additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one addition or change. Item number six, ordinances, ordinance number 1261. This is a change to Primeville Code Section 50.22, dealing with the franchise agreement with Republic Disposal Services. They were unable to conclude their review with their legal department on the changes, which I would characterize as not significant. But they asked for a little bit more time, and we certainly can do that. It has no effect on our business relationship with them. We will take this up on the first meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to postpone ordinance number 1261 to a later date.
Correct.
All right. From the consent agenda, this consent agenda was circulated with the regular meeting brief from June 9, 2020, as well as a neat repeat secondhand licensing renewal. Are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated?
This is Council Youngman, and I'll approve the consent agenda as circulated.
Thank you.
And this is Janet Hutchinson, and I'll second that.
Thank you both. Okay, are there any questions, concerns, anxieties? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jason Beebe, how do you, how say you?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
I'm going abstain since I was not present.
All right, thank you. Jeff Papke?
Aye.
And Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
Thank you. And the mayor votes aye as well, so we have motion passes. Under visitors' appearances and requests, on our next, for our next agenda item, our next agenda item, visitors' appearance and requests. And first up is Amy John, Amy Pettijohn. And Ms. Pettijohn is a Primeville resident that came to us last week with some concerns and questions regarding the city of Primeville's policies and procedures in relation to minorities within our community. She provided some materials that were distributed, distributed to the council. Prior to asking Ms. Pettijohn any questions from the council, I think it is important to note that this topic is much larger than is typical of our, in this part of the agenda. Accordingly, I would like the council to consider whether to, whether a workshop is appropriate in which we invite Ms. Pettijohn, as well as other community stakeholders, to participate in a discussion regarding justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion, and what steps may need to be taken. Ideally, it would be great if we could invite the Jedi trainer from January, from this last January, to lead us in the discussion. So keep that in mind if somebody wants to make a motion after our questions of Ms. Pettijohn to that effect, and I'm happy to entertain it. Does anyone, any council member have a question for Ms. Pettijohn? Hearing none. Ms. Pettijohn, thank you for the material and your time in attending tonight's meeting. We certainly appreciate your perspective. And as I said prior to the presentation, if there is a motion to call for a workshop regarding Jedi in the next 30 days, now would be the time to make that. Jason, I think you had a question regarding that.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I had a, kind of a little statement. I'd like to, you know, are prepared for counsel, but bear with me for a few minutes, but as many of you know, I was subject to the unfortunate rhetoric over the past week. Experiencing this dialogue, it's amazing to me how quickly misinformation can spread. I believe this is contributing to a problem rather than finding a solution. I met with leaders of the protest from last Saturday and found that most of the misinformation can quickly be dispelled simply through real conversation. As most know, I spent 12 and a half years in the military serving our, our country. I served in Iraq for 10 months because I believe in the liberties and freedoms that we all have as Americans. I fought for the protesters to be able to be at the courthouse to make their voices heard. I fought for the folks on the other side of the street to make their voices heard. And voices on both sides have been heard, and it's time to start having conversations across the street, or across the table, rather than across the street. With that stated, I would move for a workshop regarding the continuation of justice, equality, diversity, inclusion, or the Jedi project, or Jedi training, for the council and members of the public to be scheduled within the next 30 days.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Papke, thank you for, thank you for your second. Any questions, concerns? All right, hearing none, I'm going to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just have a quick statement. First, Jason, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. And I really appreciate folks like you who want to have those conversations, and I think that's important. I think it's very easy to be posting things on social media versus having the courage to address people face to face, and I applaud you for that. I applaud you for the motion. I think there's, I appreciate the city for already going through the Jedi training. And I think as all of us, we're never perfect, and it's always an opportunity to grow. And so I appreciate you making the motion, and I think it would be a good opportunity for us, not only as a city, but to invite the public to have an opportunity to continue our development. But at the same time, that might bring us to a point where we can start having better conversations with people. And like you say, instead of just posting rhetoric, is to sit down and have conversations on where are we at? Where do we need to be, and how can we get there together? So, thank you again.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Papke. Thank you. With that, I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Mr. Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Papke?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well, so we have a unanimous vote. Ms. Pettijohn, we sincerely hope you, thank you for your, your discussion and raising this issue to us. And thank you, and we will be in touch to try to put together a schedule for that event.
Don't ask.
All right, moving on. Next, we have Fairgrounds update. Jerry Brummer and Casey Daly and Gail Merritt.
I assume that Casey Daly, the Fairgrounds manager, is on along with Michaela Halverson and our county representative, Jerry Brummer, to the Fair Board. And as all of you know, the, the Fairgrounds has been deeply affected by the COVID. And we are trying to bring a fair to Crete County so that the 4-H and FFA kids can still show their animals. So Casey Daly, I hope you're here.
I am. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for taking the time to listen to us. We have just a few PowerPoint slides that we wanted to present. First of all, I don't want to dispel any rumors that, that are out there that, that pretty much say we're not having fair. We are having a fair. And evening, we'd like to present the plan, the plan to the council and the mayor, and, and move forward with, with the plan so we, we can engage the community at fairtime again. So the fairgrounds will be used strictly for the 4-H and FFA projects that the kids are so diligently have been working on since, you know, for the, for the great while. So, open class will also be handled at the fairgrounds. This will be a, a trailer-in event every day. We will not have any campers or overnight animals. The static exhibits will be a virtual show. The, the static exhibit exhibitors will submit photos of their projects. The judges will then judge those projects based on the photos that are submitted. And placement will be rendered at, at that. We are excluding anything that needs to be tasted or judged on, on a field that, that has to be done in person. So we're, we're, no beverages, no canned preserves, or any of that. The second half of the, of the fair is that we will be moving most of the community events, such as the, the entertainment, the education. We plan to spread those out in the downtown core. Riker Park, Pioneer Park will host the jugglers, the dancers, the talent showcase. And then the other exhibitors, the educational exhibitors will be scattered out amongst the downtown core. A walking map is being worked on as we speak. The map will be distributed in a one-way fashion. And folks can, at their own leisure, follow the map through and hit all of the exhibits that we have available this year. And we are restricting the hours of operation from 12 to 6 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We will have social distancing monitors will be assigned to specific areas downtown. Hand wash stations will be scattered out to downtown with hand sanitizer. Signs will be posted throughout downtown core in Spanish and English to keep everybody from gathering and maintaining social distancing. In the evenings after the 4-H and FFA groups have left the fairgrounds for the day, we will provide entertainment on our main stage. Wednesday night, we have a concert, benefit concert for the Merritt Scholarship Fund. Because we can't have a barbecue this year, so we're, we're going to make some accommodations for the scholarship. Jesse Lee will be onstage Friday night. Country Fight and Court Friday and the Lord Wally Band will be onstage Saturday night. All of these events, entertainment events, will be livestreamed on Facebook. We have a strict limit of 250 on the grounds at any one time. So we are, we're very conscious about how that's going to go. There will be a livestock sale on August 8. It will also be live broadcast. It'll be held in the arena, as usual. But most of the bidding will be done via the live cast. We met with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're encouraging businesses to engage with fair and be added to our walking map. And Tim from the Chamber is working on a plan to, to engage all of those folks again. So we are, we're, we're very proud to be able to bring fair back to the community this year. And so that is the plan as it stands. This will be made public sometime in the next couple of days, so we wanted to just answer any questions that the council and mayor might have. And I'm sure, as like us, you're getting questioned by the community about what's happening with fair.
Casey? I just wanted to add a couple things that you have been working very closely with Muriel from the Health Department, and also submitted a plan to the governor. And so far, we've had their blessings.
Correct. So the plan that, as I just outlined, was submitted to the governor's office oh, probably three weeks ago now. And they have no questions or concerns about it. The, the only question and concern that we had was with our carnival provider and how we would make that happen. We've been in discussion with our carnival provider here in the last few days. He is, he is reluctant to come and provide services to us outside of the normal fair setting. So I, I think we're, we're going to just say thank you, and we'll see him next year.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council members?
Yeah, this is Council Youngman. I was wondering, will there be a way to put donations for, for the scholarship fund in case we are not going to be there? Will that be an online thing, or will we be able to do?
Yes, we'll, we'll be able to link our website to, for donations for the Scholar, the Merritt Scholarship.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions? Gail or Jerry, did you have any additional comments to make?
No, I just have one. I think, you know, one of the good things by doing this, making it happen, most of these kids have bought their animals prior to the, the COVID deals. They already had their animals purchased, and, and a lot of them had quite a lot of grain already into these animals. So there had to be a decision made whether they, they quit their process or not, or went ahead and had an opportunity to show them and run them through the back box show. So I think it's great Casey's worked hard on this. The Fair Board's worked hard on it to, to make a way for it to happen. And I think that's wonderful for the kids and also for our community.
So the auction, the animal auction will, will take place?
Yes, it will take place.
Great. Okay. Other questions or concerns? Well, thanks all of you for, for being here and participating in that this evening, and sharing that information. It's unfortunate we can't have the regular fair, but hopefully next summer we can do that.
Yes.
Let's move on. Jerry, go ahead. Jerry, did you have an additional comment?
No, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Under council business, we have nothing listed. And so we'll go through staff reports and requests. Mr., Mr. Forrester, do you have a city manager's report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, I'm just going to report on a couple of issues that are very important to us, especially in the last few weeks here in Primeville. And tonight, I'm going to start with the public safety. Over the past few weeks, our police department has been challenged providing safety to citizens with different views, a community at large, and visitors from central Oregon and beyond. The expectation of police is perfection. Zero tolerance for anything but. They have to do it perfectly. They must be patient. They must be good listeners, polite, compassionate, friendly, and provide all these qualities and practices equally to all. They have to do all that and be human. A difficult task, to say the least. These past few weeks, they've done a phenomenal job. Our safety and the safety of all our citizens was not by chance, but rather hard work, sound strategy, strong community support, and the practice of all the characteristics I just mentioned. The support and coordination between the Primeville Police Department and other central Oregon law enforcement is a testimony to the effectiveness of our chief and his team. And make no mistake, if the needs are reversed, it is reciprocal, in that each team supports one another in times of need. The dedicated work by Chief Cummins, City Attorney Jerry Reed, and District Attorney Wade Whiting has kept all safe and opened up the opportunity to listen and learn more toward the betterment of our community. Please consider for a moment the work public safety brothers and sisters in law enforcement do on all our behalf. I feel we don't say thank you near enough, and we need to do that. The second thing I wanted to speak to tonight is Jedi. You've heard that term several times tonight. Jedi. Justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion. For those of you who know me well, I have very rarely spoke to you as city manager using the term "I." I'm going to make an exception tonight. I am very proud of our city. Since the day I started working for Primeville, I placed a high priority on continuous improvement in all that we do. I brought Jedi, justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion training to the mayor and the council in 2019, with an idea that applying Jedi to all we do at this city should be a priority. The mayor and council supported my decision to bring Jedi training to our team, and we completed the first training in January of 2020. The COVID pandemic has delayed planned Jedi training by a couple of months, as we hoped to be able to provide in-person training. And if we can't, we will look at virtual options. And tonight, we made a commitment to do that in the next 30 days. The city has been and continues to be committed to Jedi. And we expect it to be foundational. We expect Jedi to be foundational as we move forward into the future. The next thing I wanted to speak to briefly is the Police Department Dispatch accreditation. Our former interim chief, Les Stiles, introduced the city and myself to the value of accreditation in public safety and how it facilitates best practices for public safety agencies focused on procedural justice. This became a prerequisite for hiring our permanent chief. Chief Cummins came to us with previously-led experience through accreditation in his past successfully. And he met that criteria to lead our department through the accreditation process. And we are very fortunate that our police department has been accredited now for five years, and our dispatch center for over one year. Jedi training and accreditation are two examples of what the city of Primeville has done to build a foundation to support justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion. In the days and weeks ahead, the city will be sharing more information regarding what has been done in the past, what we are doing today, and what we plan to do in the future to support our commitment to Jedi, justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion, and the process of continuous improvement. Before I conclude tonight, I'd like to ask City Recorder Lisa Morgan to share a couple announcements for the council tonight. Lisa, are you ready to do that?
I found my unmute button on I am. I just wanted to-
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody that we still have packets available for elections. And you can email me if anybody's out there and would like to apply or submit their their election packets. I'd be happy to help you. Also, LOC legislative priorities are out, available. And I would like to remind you to please complete those so that we can submit them to LOC so our voice can be heard locally. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Does the council have any questions of the manager's report tonight? Thank you.
I'd like to tag on to Lisa's comment about the League of Oregon Cities has a variety of subcommittees. I've served on a couple of those, as did Lisa and Mr. Forrester as well. And please take a look at the recommendations, the list of recommendations to be considered for legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities, and get your votes in, because it is important that we address priorities for the League of Oregon Cities moving forward. With that, are there any committee reports from any of the council members?
I'd like to tag on to just the end of that conversation. I see Sean Ray's on here. I would really like to see the, the election information posted and just blasted. A lot of what's been going on in just the last year has been some very interesting information, where a lot of people have a lot of input. And I think some of those people just need to be called to the table and asked. And putting that out and really advertising for people to run for an elected position, I think would open some minds and maybe get some really good, I don't know if you call them applicants or whatever. Candidates, candidates, that's the word I want, candidates.
Hi, Teresa, this is Sean Ray. Thanks. I think that's good feedback, and we can definitely put that into our, our scheduling for our social media and make sure we're pushing that out appropriately. That's a great comment.
Yeah, and I would really, you know, I would encourage, you know, and you know, I don't know how to word it, but, you know, I, I would like to see people who are some of the, even the younger community, maybe in their twenties. And, and I know it's difficult when you have kids and jobs and all of those things. You know, I, I struggle with that also, even though I'm older than that. But I think, you know, we really need to get the word out as to what this job or what this opportunity may require as far as time goes. I know that I was not fully aware, I guess, and didn't do my research as to the subcommittees and the committees and the meetings and things like that, but also the opportunity to serve your city and what that brings with it. And encourage them to reach out to each one of us and ask us our experiences and things like that, good and bad, because I think these people really need to understand what their effect on the city and our community they can actually have.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay. Let's move on. There are no ordinances. We're skipping 1201261 till later.
Hey, Steve?
Yes?
Steve, this is Janet Hutchinson. I have a committee report.
Oh, sure, by all means.
Okay, it's the Ochko Forest Restoration Collaborative. And so in that meeting we had last week, the Forest Service talked about the Walton Lake EA, that they're responding to comments on that, and the objection process and a draft decision. And then after that, they'll look at the Wild Horse EA and the Team 21 that the regional Forest Service put into effect. They sent in information to the Federal Register notice. And in that, it will have the range of alternatives of alternatives that they're looking at. If it isn't published now in the Federal Register, it should be shortly. They had an estimate of July 13th, but they thought that could be back a week or two. They just weren't sure of the exact date. And then we had a presentation from the Ocheco Trail Collaborative, and they talked about when they started three years ago, and they're looking at a trail system from the grasslands to mandrills. And then the last thing was Pam on the Ocheco Forest Restoration Collaborative did a general overview of concerns with the objections from the Black Mountain EA and the lawsuit with Central Oregon Land Watch. And that's the... Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I rushed, apparently rushed through. Does anyone else have a committee report that they, or committee they would like to Okay, hearing none. Let's move on then to resolutions. Resolution number 1444, declaring the city of Prineville election to receive state revenue sharing, and this will have a public hearing. Liz, did you have a comment on that before we move on?
Yes, Steve, thank you. This is Liz Schutie, Finance Director. Good evening, council, mayor. The reason for this consideration is it is necessary to hold a public hearing annually with the Budget Committee and an additional hearing with the council, along with a resolution in order to receive state revenue sharing. On June 16th, the Budget Committee approved the necessary budget hearing, and tonight we will pass Resolution 1444.
Thank you. I ran things a little bit out of sequence. The council will now hold a public hearing regarding Resolution number 1444, declaring the city of Prineville election to receive state revenue sharing. This hearing was noticed in the Central Argonian on June 16th, 2020, as well as posted on our website. And the hearing will, well, the hearing will be opened as soon as Liz Schutie has completed. And after she has given her report, then we'll give the public the opportunity to provide oral testimony regarding the resolution. Comments on other matters are not permitted during this public hearing. We will unmute the public line, and if you wish to speak, please do so. Our technology will identify the number and mute. I will ask the unmuted speaker to provide your name and address, and then you will, then you may present your testimony to the council. After each speaker, I will ask if there is anybody else online that wishes to speak regarding the proposed resolution and to that topic only. We will do this until I hear silence. After the oral testimony, I will read any written testimony that was presented to the council, after which time we will then discuss the matter at the council. If anyone wishes to make a motion to approve Resolution 1444, they may do so. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the, to the motion, I mean, to the, to the state public, the state funds? Mr. Wilson, do we have anybody online that wishes to speak that you know of?
There are several people on the line, and they have been unmuted, however, none have stated they wish to speak.
Again, I will request, does anyone wish to speak to state revenue sharing? Hearing none, I will close the public testimony, close the public hearing.
You will need to ask Ms. Morgan if there is any written testimony for the council to consider.
All right. Ms. Morgan, is there anyone that has written, has submitted a written testimony or statement in regard to that, to revenue sharing?
Written testimony received.
No written testimony received.
Okay, thank you, all right. Then we have closed the public hearing on Resolution number 1444. Questions or comments by the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution number 1444?
This is Councilor Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1444, declaring the city of Prineville election to receive state revenue sharing.
Second? And who is the second from?
Teresa.
Teresa, thank you very much, Teresa. So we have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jason Beebe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappki?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So Resolution number 1444 passes unanimously. Resolution number 1445, making appropriation adjustments through fiscal year 2019, 2020. Liz Schutie?
Yes, Mayor, council. We have a couple of adjustments for appropriations in the Water SDC Fund and the Railroad Fund. And this resolution authorizes us to make those adjustments. Is there any questions about them?
Any concerns at all? This is, this is the routine that we do at the end of each fiscal year, and though we're in a two-year cycle, we still need to wrap up this year and standard process and practice.
Is this for 1920 or 2021? Because I thought I heard you say 1920.
We have a budget for 20, for 2020, 21, a two-year cycle, but we have the end of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. And we need to, that's what we're reading, was it just the year end of this fiscal year, first year of the two-year cycle. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number 1445?
This is Councilor Merritt, and I'll move to approve Resolution number 1445.
Thank you, Gail. Is there a second?
Yeah, Councilor Beebe, and I'll second.
Jason, thank you very much for your second. Again, any questions or concerns moving forward? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappki?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So Resolution number 1445 passes, and we'll move on. The council will now hold a public hearing regarding Resolution number 1446, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. This, this hearing was noticed in the Central Argonian on June 16th, 2020, as well as posted on our city website. The hearing will open with a presentation from city's chief financial officer, Liz Schutie. After Ms. Schutie's presentation, we will then give the public an opportunity to provide oral testimony regarding the resolution. Comments on other matters are not permitted during this public hearing. We will unmute the public line. If you wish to speak, please do so. Our technology will identify the mute number and unmute any other number, and mute any other numbers. I will ask the unmuted speaker to provide your name and address, and then you may present your testimony to the council. After each speaker, I will ask if there is anybody else online that wishes to speak regarding the proposal, proposed resolution, and to that topic only. We will do this and hear, until I hear silence. After the oral testimony, I will read any written testimony that was presented to council, after which time we will then discuss the matter as council, and if anybody wishes to make a motion to approve Resolution number 1446, they may do so. Liz Schutie?
Yes, Mayor. This is a supplemental budget, making new appropriations for the 2021 budget, annual fiscal year. These are, were unanticipated projects or additional costs that we weren't aware of when we put the budget together in 1920. We have supplemental budget for the Transportation SDC Fund, the Water SDC Fund, and the Building Facility Fund, within the amount of $12,289,667. Is there any questions about the changes in the budget?
Any questions at all? All right, with that, I will open up, I will open up public testimony. Mr. Wilson, do we have anyone who on the line that would wish to speak to the, to the resolution for the supplemental budget?
All lines have been unmuted. If you wish to speak to the supplemental budget, please speak now. Nothing has been heard.
Okay, thank you. I will turn to, then to Lisa. Lisa Morgan, do you have, did you receive any written testimony?
There was not any written testimony received.
Okay. With no verbal or written testimony, I will close the public hearing. And does anyone have any questions or concerns, or would anyone like to make a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution number 1446, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020?
Should be 2021.
2021, I'm sorry, that's...
This is Councilor Youngman, and being new, I'm kind of, you know, new to everything. Is this a normal thing that $12 million for a supplemental budget? I know we have not done two-year budgets before, but is this kind of a normal amount that we adjust annually?
This is a fairly high... Go ahead, shoot, go ahead, ladies.
I'm sorry. These are, these are projects that, that were unanticipated. The Building Facility Fund, which was increased, the new, the new amount is $11,789. That was a refunding that paid off an existing loan, and then we refunded the entire project at a lesser rate. That was a big chunk of money. The Water SDC Fund, we had additional costs in the ASR project. And then in the Transportation Fund, we had the Elm Street Bridge where we received additional grant dollars that we needed to recognize, and the project, it wasn't finished in the year that we anticipated, so we have, we had to move the expenditures to a new year. And that's the reason for that supplemental budget.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I think, I think, Patricia, I think it's important to note that this is not uncommon. Typically, it's driven by two things. A project that we weren't aware of, changes to an existing project or timing, meaning, as Liz said, in the case of the Elm Street, it didn't happen within the close of a budget year. So it is not uncommon to have the supplemental budgets, and in the case of some of the projects that we're doing and the costs associated with them, ASR, some of the projects we've done in the past with piping projects up the hill to facilitate the activity on top of the grade, you know, the Elm Street Bridge, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. So not uncommon. Certainly, it's not by design, but it's necessary quite frequently to do this.
And one other piece is that in doing the refinancing, because we are dealing with additional dollars, we have already approved and used those dollars and we're refinancing them, but we need to show that, those dollars a second time. We're not spending additional dollars in that respect, we're simply refinancing, but it needs to show up in the supplemental budget.
Thank you.
So that disproportionately raises the numbers, so. Right, is there a motion to approve Resolution number 1446?
This is Councilor Beebe, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 1446.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff Pappki?
Mr. Pappki, thank you very much for your second. Again, any questions, concerns? We do a roll call vote, having heard no comments. Mr. Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappki?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. Motion 144, Resolution number 1446 passes unanimously. All right.
Prior to going into Resolution 1447, I just wanted to alert that on this particular resolution, I believe both Ms. Schutie and Mr. Kwan are making presentations prior to the hearing being opened.
Okay, all right, thank you. The council shall now hold a public hearing regarding Resolution number 1447, adopting, establishing fees and charges for fiscal year 2020, 2021. This hearing was noticed in the Central Argonian on June 16th, 2020, as well as posted on our city website. The hearing will open with presentation from city's chief financial officer, Liz Schutie, as well as chief engineer Eric Kwan. And after their presentation, we will give the public the opportunity to provide oral testimony regarding the resolution. Comments on other matters are not permitted during this public hearing. We will unmute the public line. If you wish to speak, please do so. Our technology will identify the number and mute any other numbers. I will ask the unmuted speaker to provide your name and address, and then you may present your testimony to the council. After each speaker, I will ask if there is anybody else that wishes, online that wishes to speak regarding the proposed resolution and to that topic only. We will do this until I hear silence. After the oral testimony, I will read any written testimony that was presented to council, after which time we will then discuss the matter as a council, and if anybody wishes to make a motion to approve Resolution number 1447, they may do so. So Liz Schutie, or Eric Kwan, whichever...
I will, I will give the staff report, and first I wanted to try and go through the Exhibit A, which is the, or the rate schedule that we're, will be adopting at some point. The community development charges have basically increased by the, help me with this, Josh, the unemployment number of 3%.
What was that, Liz?
You had told me that you increased the, the community development fees by approximately 3% in accordance with the...
Yes, not the SDCs, the Community Development Department. My increase is, which is basically through 2.0, basically all of the 2.0 through, up till 3.0, our community development fees have been increased by 3%. Some stayed the same, a couple of them went down. And that's based on the Employment Cost Index from the Bureau of Labor and Statu- And that's based on the Employment Cost Index from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. We do that every year. We just basically raise it by the cost of personnel.
Thank you, Josh. And then the SDC fees are increased according to what the CCI is, which is the Construction Index from Seattle, and that rate was .75. There is no increase in the wastewater rate. And then that brings us to water. And that is what the staff report is about. And that water starts on the rate schedule at 5.0. The original budget that we put together in fiscal year 2020 for the biennium, we had a increase that was figured in for 2021, and passed and adopted by the council and the Budget Committee with a 2% rate increase, which would bring in revenue totaling 2.945 As we went through the first year of our biennium, our water usage has declined, and the revenues are not coming in as we anticipated. So, we have done quite a bit of work analyzing the issues. The long-term impact of declining revenues will put the current water system in jeopardy of continued maintenance and needed capital improvements, and cause users larger increases in the future. If we, we feel like, staff recommends a 5% increase in the adoption of this tiered rate plan in October of 2020. We've talked about these at workshops and in finance committee meetings. That's the staff's recommendation. We wanted to discuss some other options. In this rate schedule, you'll see three different columns of rates. One, one of the, the first column is in black, that's the current rate. Then you'll see three, three columns, one's 2%, one's 3%, and one's 5%. I'm gonna let Eric take over and go through a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, with that said, good evening, Eric Kwan. We've discussed this issue several times, both with the finance committee and then with the entire council at workshop. So, this is the presentation you've seen previously. I've cut it down to really the four main slides, but right here, this really shows you the issue that we have in front of us and the decision the council has to make. So, this is our wastewater fund, the Historic Wastewater Fund. So, for 15, for 15 years, that fund was held at $15 a month. And you can see, as plant capacity ran out, expansions were needed to be made, we had several drumps of 25% a year. So, right now, we're talking about a 5% increase. We jumped, that fund was jumped up 25% a year for several years. It went from, over the course of four or five years, it went from $15 to over $50, and that was just because that fund wasn't in good shape. With some of the projects that we were able to do, we were, been able to lower that. When I came onboard in 2008, started looking at some different options, we held that fund steady, we were able to actually lower it. You can see that increase from 2013 to 2017, that was when we were under construction, and the reason we increased rates was to get a million-dollar grant to do that, and as soon as that project was done, we lowered rates. So, we're in good shape, we're currently holding those steady, but we're doing that very responsibly. We're looking at that fund, making sure it's strong. But at the end of the day, that fund was held at $15 for 15 years, and those increases were pretty dramatic. The issue, as we go to the next slide that we see with the water fund, is, this is where our water rates currently stand as compared to neighboring communities. So, you can see we're a little more than Redmond, but significantly less than Redmond. So, it's not like our water fund is out of balance by any imagination. We go to our next slide. The slide really shows the issue that we're up against. You can see in 2017, we sold about 600 million gallons of water. That jumped up in 18 to 640 million, and then we saw that big drop-off in 2019. As we've discussed previously, a lot of that's due to construction water, the data centers were really not at a stage that they're using a lot of water, but by selling that, that much less water, it's significantly impacted our budget. Eventually, the system is quite new, meaning that we have capacity in the system right now. So, as our community grows and we sell more water, that fund will become that much more, more strong, but at the end of the day, we're, we have a very, essentially, young system with a lot of capacity, and these are the issues we're facing. So, we move forward to the next slide. This essentially summarizes what Liz had talked about. 2% increase is budgeted. We really, after studying this, think that a 5% increase would be the fiscally responsible thing to do. We're going to come back to council in the fall with the tiered rates. But just to understand what this impact will be, a 5% increase, that would increase the summer consumption of our average residential customer by about $200, $2.40 a month. In the winter, it would increase it by $1.43 a month for a grand total of $23 a year. With that said, the replacement value of our water system is $100 million. That's a big asset we'd like to maintain. And, you know, at the end of the day, easy decision would be to just not raise those. I understand we have the issue with COVID, we have people out of work, but with that said, when I first came to the city of Prineville, worked through all of our master plans, worked through all of our rates, that water, that wastewater fund, that was the biggest issue. And we received some fairly direct direction from council not to do that again, not to hold rates down, and then be faced with large increases. That issue came up with our sanitary waste company that held rates down, and then came to city with a significantly large increase probably five or six years ago. And once again, that was very upsetting to council, they wanted to, you know, make those increases when needed, not hold them down, and then come with a really impactful increase. So, with that said, that's the, the recommendation from staff would be to raise those rates by 5%. We know that's significant. It's very important to both your city manager, Steve, myself, our Public Works Department, we do everything we can to keep rates as low as possible. We've been able to lower our SDCs several times, we've lowered rates. There's not too many communities that can say they do that, but we just really recommend this 5% increase to maintain that very, very large asset that we have. We'd be happy to discuss. Any questions the council may have?
I just wanted to add one more thing before we go into the questions. The, the city currently has 3,887 water accounts, and as of June 9th, 113 delinquent accounts. That's 2.9% of accounts. Prior to COVID, we had an average of 50 delinquent accounts, and that's, or 1.3% of our customers. So, we still have 97% of customers paying their water bill. I just wanted to give you that information. Is there questions?
One of the questions I guess I have is, how much of an impact is, we see a rate increase, and so people stop watering their yards, they replace it with rock, is this, is this shortfall basically strictly because of the market, not the residential market?
Oh, the, the biggest impact, Teresa, was the construction water. We had one of the data centers that was spending $100,000 a month on bulk water, where they were taking potable water, spraying it on the ground for dust control. And right now, that's not happening, you know, they're not at that stage where, they're not at that construction stage, you know, now they were moved indoors where they're not dealing with the dust issue. With that said, you know, conservation has been a big push for the city. That's something that we, we'd like to see, you know, by, by conserving water, we can, our system will last that much longer. And this is really just the place we find ourselves right now. 5%, 5% increase is not uncommon with utilities. We'd really like to implement this and then really watch that water fund to see how this next year comes. As we discussed previously, it's been a very, very wet spring. Last year, we had a very wet and cool spring, very wet and cool fall. You know, this, this could completely turn around. We have a normal, normal summer and fall, but we'll just really need to watch that. My crystal ball really isn't that clear to see how we'll come out of this.
One of the other questions that I've gotten from the public, and, and I'm sure you can answer this, is with that increase of the construction water use, when we went from basically our normal usage, and then we had a huge jump in the construction usage due to the data center, the other construction, can you tell for the record what type of water projects and where that money went, so that it can be justified as to that, that increase of revenue? How, how was that money used?
Well, definitely two different, two different revenue sources. So, when a data center comes into town, or a business, or whomever, they pay water system development charges. So, those dollars go into the construction of our ASR project, or the construction of new wells, or new lines, or new tanks. That's where we want to make very, very sure that our new, that our existing customers aren't supporting the growth of new customers. You know, that would be crazy if we had our existing customers paying to build the water system that Facebook or Apple needs, they, you know, Facebook and Apple needs to pay for that. So, very much, we separate those two. With that said, when we had the additional revenue in water, so that was from water sales, and so completely separate account, so water sales, the big drivers in that would be like electricity, chemicals, we put a little chlorine in our system, and maintenance. And so, with those additional revenues, Teresa, what we do is, we pay for those utilities, we pay for the power, for the chemicals, but then we also maintain the system. And so, when revenues were high a couple of years ago, we were putting upwards of $800,000 into water line replacement. As we mentioned, the replacement value of the water system is $100 million. You know, we need to maintain that asset. As the water revenue has dropped off, that capital outlay will drastically decrease. So, this next year, we have approximately $200,000 budgeted, and we're really, we're not going to spend any of that until we see how this shakes out. So, essentially, to answer your question, that additional revenue went to pay for the, the cost of running the system, so the additional electricity, and then into maintenance.
Okay, those were the.
I think for clar, I think for, excuse me, I think for clarification, what your, your question is, is the revenue that we get from water staying with the water system, and yes, it does. Any, any revenue that comes in from the sale of water stays with it, with the, with the department, it's not used, it's not put in the general fund, it's not used for other purposes. It stays within, within the water system, and funds only the water system.
Right. The question that I, the question that I got in particular was the, the large increase of the sale of water, and then the decrease, and so obviously, there was a more, a substantial amount of money there. The person, the, the community member that was asking me about that is, well, where did the excess go? Why was there not a savings, or, you know, things like that? So, that was where I needed clarification on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, additional power, additional capital outlay to maintain the system. And with that said, we do have reserve funds in each department, that we definitely don't want to spend those down to nothing before we come and talk to council.
Right. Thank you.
This is Janet Hutchinson. So, Liz, can you put up on the screen again, the point two where it talks about commercial and industrial rates? Or is that too difficult to do?
Is that five point, in the, you're talking in the water fund?
Do you have the rate schedule?
Okay, thank you. So, my question is, after the 1.5 year on down to six meters, inch meter, why have those rates all decreased? And what, what does that, what does that serve? Does that serve industrial folks?
What that, I can answer that, and that's a wonderful question, Janet. So, over the course of the last four years, we've been updating the water rate. So, previously, if you had a 1-inch meter or larger, you had, there was water included in that monthly payment. So, if you had a 3-inch meter, let's say, you had a fairly large payment, so last year it was $99, but you got, you received a good deal of water at a discounted rate. So, rather than paying our commodity rate of approximately $2 a unit, so $2 for every 750 gallons, you might be paying significantly less than that. What that issue, the issue that arose from that is that, once again, our residential customers were subsidizing the larger industrial customers. And so, over the course of the last four years, we've been decreasing the amount of water that was included with those large meters. This is the last year of that, and so that's why you see some of those meters dropping down. Those meters that had previously paid a higher rate, they were getting discounted water in that, and now that's where you see zero units are included. Last year, if you would have looked at the rate schedule, those would have had different amounts of water included in that base payment.
So, are those for industrial use, where the three-quarter and the 1-inch meter are for residential?
Yeah, you might have some commercial customers on a 1-inch meter. Those had less water included, and so we had decreased those maybe in year two or year three. But really, anything over an inch meter is going to be an industrial customer. So, like I say, those industrial customers were somewhat being forced to buy water in their monthly rate, however, that water was at a discounted rate, and we've just been pushing very, very hard to be equitable across the line. And four years ago, council decided that we wanted to remove that are included, so that our residential customers weren't subsidizing our industrial customers.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Yeah, question, this is Councilman Patkey. So, Eric, where the, the minimum monthly charge is going down, they're actually going to be paying more per unit, correct?
Yeah, so if we look at, let's just look at the inch and a half meter. So, last year, they were paying $64.50, and now they're paying $55.84. But last year, they may have been receiving 50 units of water for free, and, or well, 50, 50 units of water. Some, some amount of water was included in that $64. Now, there's no water included in that, so that's why they're paying less, but it's more equitable.
Yeah, so Eric, it was 14 units for one, one and a half inch meter last year.
Okay. Yeah, so one and a half.
Excuse me, go ahead. I was just gonna say, if you look at the water, at the, at the residential water rates, their rates include 100 cubic feet of water with the base rate.
Say that again, Liz. The, the residential customers, they pay the base rate, and then any water that they use, they pay that $2.08.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they had some water that was included with that. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they had some water that was included with that. Okay. I get it. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's-
This is Teresa.
Pardon?
I thought we had talked about, um, revisiting this increase in the fall to, um, basically activate it at a later date due to COVID.
That, well, not to speak to the COVID, but the tiered rates, Teresa, we had decided we would implement those in the fall so that people could grow into them as their usage increases next spring. We didn't want to hit them with the tiered water rate during their, their highest monthly use. Um, we could definitely delay this until the fall, the five percent rate. However, we sell the majority of our water, obviously during the summer. And so that would put us farther behind. And, you know, that, that's definitely an option that the council could choose. With that said, you know, we're trying to maintain this big asset and for the average water consumer during the summer, so this is somebody that irrigates, I think, you know, fifteen, sixteen units of water. They're using a fair amount of water. It's two dollars and forty cents a month. You know, in the winter months it'd be less than two dollars. And so I guess my thought is, and I'm just, you know, one person would be, you know, that's a relatively small increase to maintain the asset. With that said is, you know, if I had lost my job, maybe I would choose to water my lawn less. You know, and so it's not like we're doing that mandatory. And, you know, people still have some control of, of how that is going to impact them based upon their, the usage of their water.
Okay.
This is Councilor Youngman. I see that there's a two percent, a three percent and a five percent column. And we've only really talked about the five percent. Is there, are we even, is three percent on the table?
The, the two percent was budgeted. Liz just wanted to show you the di- the difference between the other ones. Um, with that said, the staff recommendation would be five percent to main, to, you know, to maintain the system. But we, we just wanted to show what those other ones would look like.
Any other questions? And Patricia, did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, it did. But, um, the other question I have is, you know, if we do things now, say percent or five or whatever, come the next fall when we do the tiered one, um, it, that was, that's going to be also another increase. So, um, I'm just kind of wondering, when you do that, will you be beyond the five percent and you'll be like, you know, rolling down the river and we won't, I mean, the rates will be good, everything will be covered. Is that what, where we're going to?
No, we're still proposing. We'll still, we're still planning to bring the tiered rates back to council this fall. And once again, the reason we're doing that is to make it more equitable to where our residential customers aren't subsidizing our industrial customers. With that said, Janet, if we were to do a five percent increase, we'll monitor our water sales throughout the summer and those tiers may be at different locations. Then, you know, we'll see where they need to be and then bring that back to council and that'll be a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
But when we bring those tiers in, that's not going to change the base rate. So if we put in the five percent increase and on the base rate and when we bring those tiers in, they're still going to be the same. It's going to be the tiers are going to be added, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else, any other questions of the council before we open to, for the public hearing?
I apologize for yelling at my dog when my phone, when it wasn't muted.
Okay. Then with that, uh, we will open the public hearing. And Mr. Wilson, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the council regarding the adoption of establishing fees and charges for fiscal year twenty twenty one?
Public hearing line has been unmuted. If anyone wishes to speak, speak now. Nothing was heard.
Oh, wait, I wanted to talk, sorry.
Yes, please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, I'm Amy Pettijohn, I'm ten seventy Northeast Ochico. I'm sorry, my laptop died on me. Um, so, um, I did want to say I'm concerned, um, as a citizen who, I saw your little, um, thing about the average rates and everything. And having seen my bill, it normally runs about seventy dollars a month. And that seems to be what I'm, my understanding is the, the base rate for, um, for, for the, um, for the residential. And yeah, I know it's not a huge amount increase every month, but a lot of our members of the community are struggling and I understand that you're wanting to make sure that we can maintain the asset, but it's concerning that our rates are so high to start with and then you're adding on to it.
So Amy, when you say seventy dollars a month, are you in, does that include your sewer bill as well?
Yeah, the water and sewer, that's, that's the whole thing. Um, so, and I, I'm assuming that includes taxes and everything.
So yeah, so your sewer would be approximately fifty dollars and then your water would be about twenty dollars. And right now we're just talking about the water portion of that.
Okay. But I mean, still my, as a, as a whole, the bill's going to go up. And if we're already paying, you know, over seventy dollars a month for water and sewer together, it, it seems like it's high. And I'm, I'm just concerned that, um, for members of our community, i- it's a strain. I know one of my friends complains. She's like, I get the senior discount, which is helpful, but it's like, what, a couple bucks a month? She's like, I wish it was bigger. And, um, it seems like our rates seem higher than the national average to me.
Yep. Uh, you know, and I, and I appreciate that. We do everything we can to drive rates down. We've been able to lower sewer rates. With that said, um, that, one of those first slides showed, you know, we are more than Redmond, but less than Bend and Madras. With that, you know, with that said, I get it. You know, these are essentially regressive taxes where they impact low income people more than high income people. And that's where as we move to the tiered rates, you know, you can essentially choose what you want to pay based upon how much water you use.
Um, and I guess if you're going to increase the rates, I, I would like to see a reduction in the, um, in the reconnection fees or something to help offset that. Um, I know you guys had re, um, increased the reconnection fees. And in my experience, people don't not pay their water bill because like, they don't want to. It's because like, they don't have the money. And then adding a huge reconnection fee on top of everything else. I don't know. It, it seems like it's very unfair to, to certain members of our community.
If I remember correctly, there was a discussion on, um, a water relief type of funding or get, or partnering with one of the, um, Neighbor Impact or one of those others to try to create something to help low income, kind of like the power, the way they do the power bills and things. Is, is, is any one of our partners doing that?
Teresa, one of the things that we had just recently talked about was the potential to increase the franchise fees and that significant increase in funding, we would potentially use that to increase the senior discount, low income discount. You know, that was a recent conversation we've had.
So that might be something, you know, where we can maybe reach out to, um, Neighbor Impact or St. Vincent de Paul, um, maybe see if they have assistance programs we're not aware of for the water, um-
Okay. But we're getting, we're getting away from, we're getting away from the public testimony specifically regarding the resolution into solving other, other issues. And I would like to get back to the public testimony regarding resolution number one four four seven. Sorry to interrupt you, Teresa, but that's what you're talking about, we have time and place to deal with. But, uh, let's deal with one, this other first.
Okay.
Other comments on, um, is there anyone else that would like to speak to resolution number one four four seven? Mr. Wilson?
The line has been unmuted. And if you wish to speak to this resolution, please speak now.
You may ask if Ms. Pettijohn was done with-
I'm sorry, excuse me. Ms. Pettijohn, were you done with your testimony? I apologize, I cut you off.
That's okay. Um, I've said my piece. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Wilson, was there anyone else?
There was no one else that indicated they wished to speak.
Okay, um, Lisa Morgan, is there anyone that writ, submitted written testimony?
There was, there wasn't any written testimony.
Okay. Further discussion?
You need to close it.
I'm sorry, we, I need to close the, close the public hearing. Thank you, council. Um, public, if public testimony is closed for the council, general discussion. Is there any, are any oth- other concerns, questions that you want to raise?
This is Janet Hutchison. So Teresa, I was under the same impression that you were, that this was going to be addressed later in the fall. Um, I, I have concerns with the increase in rates due to COVID. And then what Liz stated and what we heard last month, or last meeting with the number of people that are behind. Um, it, it just seems like there's so many people that were out of work with COVID and now they're just starting to get their, some of them gone back, some of them haven't. And it, it's going to be difficult for them with any type of increase. So, um, I just thought this could have been postponed until the fall. That's it.
Other comments?
This is Councilor Youngman, and I have to kind of go along with Teresa and Janet and also Amy. Um, I think that right now is not a good time to be putting in increases, even though it's not a whole lot. Um, I think maybe delaying it till the fall would maybe be a better option, um, because we still don't what's going to happen. And I, I just, I have reservations also.
That, that's definitely an option the council would have. With that said, you know, let's remember that first slide we looked at at, were held for fifty years. And then we did twenty five percent increases year after year after year. And so, you know, we can definitely not do the five percent increase. But remember, this is when we're selling our water. So with that said, if this five percent increase turns into a needed seven or eight percent increase as we move forward, that's just something that the council needs to own. You know, we, we will see how that works out. Once again, none of these go, dollars go out of the water fund. These dollars just stay to maintain that very large asset. Um, and, you know, but we can look at different options for sure.
Okay. Other comments?
This is Councilor Hutchison. So I understand, Eric, what you're saying. But I think what we all are trying to say is people might be in a better economic situation later on than what they are now. So, um, that's, that's my thought. It's the whole economics, the timing of it to me isn't right. So thank you.
This is Teresa. Um, you know, I think instead of a five percent increase this year, you know, maybe we do look at a seven percent increase next, next year. Um, you know, maybe we go from a two dollar to a two dollar and fifty cent or two dollar and three dollar increase a month with the tiered rate where people have a little bit more control over their bills. I'm, I'm kind of in the same position as far as timing goes. And I'm just wondering is, you know, maybe we need to eat that next year. Um, maybe we need to eat that when, you know, next summer when those rates are, when it was the timing to rates. We're looking at another spike of a COVID this fall. And I'm just, I'm really concerned. I mean, that two dollars might not be a lot, but when this unemployment goes away for the COVID and we don't know if it's going to be re-upped, you're looking at people who might be living off of six, seven hundred dollars a month.
Yeah. At the end of the day, you know, that, that fund, we operated as inexpensively as we can, you know, and we just, we want to maintain that asset for sure. That, that's been the direction that council's given us. And, you know, with that said, with that said though, um, you know, I'm sure there were a lot of conversations back during the day, why the wastewater fund, nobody wanted to raise it. And then I don't know how many of those people were still on council when they had to start jacking it up, you know, twenty five percent year after year. But I, I just want the council to understand the impacts of that. And you know, a five percent increase now versus a seven percent increase next year, is that going to be that much more palatable? You know, if you're not, if you're using five units a month, we're talking about about a dollar eighty a month, which I think it's more of the, just the idea of the raise with everybody struggling right now.
And a lot of it is the idea of the increase. It absolutely is. And I, I agree one hundred percent. And I mean, I have watched just in the time that I've been on con, council, you and Scott and Public Works and the way that you do take care of our system and you have been upgrading it and you're using grants as much as possible. And um, I mean, look at the wastewater program, the wastewater treatment plan out, or the, I'm sorry, whatever, the, um,
Wetland.
There we go, Wetland. You know, the Wetland project is a really good example of how you guys are awesome at, um, you know, managing the money and, and getting outside funding and resources and making these projects happen. I see that. I think an increase, you know, um, I'm just looking at outside in, it is more of the idea of the increase versus the increase. I'm just also looking at what happens because we are in strange times financially. If we lose those, uh, you know, those COVID payments on unemployment, we keep losing jobs, we keep losing this. It may not be a lot to some, but it may be a lot for others.
Okay.
And I just want to say that, Mike, that our staff report and our recommendation is just based on what, uh, when we look at the fund financially, what we feel is physically responsible. It's, um, you know, how you guys choose to vote, um, totally we'll figure out what to do.
And we're recognized too, that we are running a business and we need to-
Yeah, Patsy.
Oh, Ms. Patsy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm incredibly sympathetic to folks in this time and the hardships that many are facing. And we wish we could wave a magic wand and make it go away. We can't. It might not be the easiest thing to, to bite and to own. But unfortunately, I've got to say, we've got to go with the increase. Um, I think there is still some opportunities for people to make some choices to be able to mitigate the effect it has on them individually. And maybe that can be part of some social media. Hey, how do you, do you know if you do these things? You know, um, I know there's programs out there for, you know, faucets and leaky heads and low, low flow water adapters you can put on your sinks and things like that. Um, and we can help, you know, steer people to those ways. Um, I just think as the fiscal managers, or at least ultimately the buck stops with us on how do we, and the mayor brought it up, we are running a business. And sometimes it might not be the most popular choice, but ultimately we have to think of the city and everybody as a whole and what would be the best for that group. And I have to say, I think we have to go with a five percent. Um, it, it's not easy now. And I, I hear what you're saying, well, let's put it to seven or eight percent down the road. I, I don't, to me, I don't think that's good logic. I just think it's, we're just kicking that can down and it gets to be a much bigger can down the road. And so I, I think we need to go ahead and, and do it now.
Mayor, I, this is Councilor Beebe. And I, I'd have to agree with, uh, I agree with Jeff. And exactly, he said what I was thinking. And I've sat through some of those conversations of those bigger increases and they're not fun. And it's, you definitely don't want to put that on your constituents and have your, your community pay for it. But I agree, if we don't, if we don't take care of the system now, what's it going to cost us down the road? And, and with, uh, I'm going to give Eric some kudos here. We, we did some things with our systems that saved this community uh, upwards of sixty five, seventy million dollars. We, we did some things with our systems that saved this community upwards of $65, $70 million for a water treatment plant. So, um, you know, we cut that down considerably and didn't, we could be sitting there right now having to pay that amount of money. Uh, and that would all be on every one of us. We're all in the city limits, we'd all be paying for that too. And, um, I agree with Jeff and I appreciate Jeff, what you said, and, um, those are just my thoughts on this.
One, one thing I would add is, we've, um, we've received several good awards for our water conservation activities and working with our customers. And we do provide low-flow showerheads. We do provide faucet aerators and irrigation controls at no cost. Those are just at City Hall for people to get. That could be something that maybe we add that to our Facebook page to remind people that they can pick those up at no cost.
No, I love that idea.
It also, we also have the opportunity to attempt to create a fund of some sort to, to assist, for an assistance program on the side, um, for those people that legitimately need some assistance that, uh, we, we haven't provided necessarily in the past. So I think there are other alternatives to go along with, with a fair rate increase that we need to maintain the system. So I guess that would be the, I would be more inclined to look for means of added assistance rather than cutting our rate down for everybody when, uh, when we need, we need some from revenue.
No, and I agree with that. I had mentioned that earlier about the, um, the assistance programs. And I wasn't aware of the, um, the, the, um, showerheads and the aerators. I wasn't aware that that was available at City Hall. So maybe this would be another good opportunity to show the city, or show the community how we can help and start hitting the social media with those things, especially, you know, let's educate them on why we need an increase so we don't get a big increase down the road. But in the meantime, here's what we can do to help mitigate that. That I can get on board.
This is Counselor Merritt, and I want to thank Jeff for what he had to say. And the city is a business and it is hard to make an increase. But as a past business owner, if you don't care what, or if you don't take care of what you have, you're going to be in big trouble down the road. So Jeff, very well said.
Um, I, um, as I said, um, if you're going to do the increase, goodbye.
Go ahead, Amy.
Go ahead, Amy, go ahead.
Um, if you're going to do the increase, um, as I said, I would like to see, uh, maybe something done with the reconnection fees. Um, that was a fairly good increase that you guys did. Um, and I, I know that that's, but as I said, people don't not pay their water bill because they don't want to. They don't pay their water bill because they don't have money. Um, so, and I would love to see, um, something done with Neighbor Impact or St. Vincent de Paul because currently, to my knowledge, there is no programs out there if you are in trouble with your water bill.
Um, I can't, I have a... Um, Neighbor Impact is working on that. That is something that was just sent out by Scott Cooper. So they are looking to helping with water bills in Central Oregon, but they haven't got...
This is Lori Hooper, the accounting manager.
Lori Hooper has...
Oh, Lori, I'm sorry, Lori, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that St. Vincent de Paul does have a program, and we do send our customers, when they've been shut off, to St. Vincent de Paul for their voucher program.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori. Um, this is City Manager Steve. Uh, one of the things that I think the council needs to keep in mind with this current line of conversation is, we are, uh, we will do a resolution here shortly, extending our franchise agreement with Pacific Power. Um, as you recall, we did have a discussion about increasing that. And with that increase, an opportunity to fund some assistance programs. So I want you to keep that in mind, um, that we decided, uh, the last council meeting to extend the current agreement at the current franchise rate. But that would be an opportunity to revisit in the months ahead, to look at the potential on a program such as Amy's discussed, discussing here tonight and Theresa as well, that could fund, uh, a better, more robust assistance program for those in need. So keep that in mind, that that was something that we did discuss, something that is still available for development in the months ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one briefly, Mayor. Um, this is the staff recommendation in regards to a motion, if one were to be put on the floor, presented, is a, is a somewhat, uh, more complicated one because it's kind of twofold. And I believe what staff is recommending is a 5% increase in the adoption of a tiered, uh, plan in October of 2020 with pursuant to Option 1, 2, or 3 of Exhibit A. So, uh, if, if somebody were to move, as staff is recommending, then it would be, uh, move for a 5% increase and adoption of a tiered rate plan in October 2020 pursuant to Option Blank of Exhibit A. And again, three options that were presented by staff in the, in the report.
Jared, if I could, if I could interject, and Liz, maybe correct me, or Steve, it was my understanding that we were going to bring the tiered rates back as their own issue this fall. They were, because they're not currently included in this rate schedule. And so I think that would be a...
Right, we were going to have another workshop. I, I thought we were going to come and have another workshop in the fall with, with what we've come up, um, analyzed. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I think if council was interested in going with the 5% increase, you could just adopt the rate schedule as proposed. Um, we'll bring the tiered rates back later if you chose to do some lesser amount or to move that increase into the future. That would be some sort of a different motion. Would you agree with that, Counselor?
Whatever you're recommending, I'm just looking at the staff report, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could, we could go one of two ways. We could go with, with the, uh, straight increase, or we could go with the tier, with the combination of the straight increase or the increase and the adoption of the tiered rate, uh, plan for October of 2020. So, but does anyone have a preference or a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Pappy? I would move to approve Resolution Number 1447 with Option 3 of a 5% rate increase.
Okay, is there a second? Counselor Beebe, you, you seconded that, is that correct?
That's right, Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing no further discussion, we'll go with a roll call vote. And, um, Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchison?
No.
Patricia Youngman? Patricia? Patricia, I'll come back to you.
I'm here, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to say no.
Okay, thank you. Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappy?
Aye.
Theresa Rumble?
I'm going to go with Aye, based off of the conversation we had.
We missed that, Theresa, can you restate your?
I'm going to say Aye. No, I'm going to say Aye.
You said Aye, okay, I hear you saying Aye, and the mayor votes Aye as well. It's a 5-2 split, but the motion passes for a 5% increase on Resolution Number 1447. All right, um, moving on. Where am I on my agenda?
Item number 11.
Okay, uh, number 11. Resolution Number 1448, granting an extension of Pacific Power franchise agreement. Uh, Mr. Forrester?
So, uh, as we discussed at the previous council meetings, uh, we, we do have our franchise agreement with Pacific Power coming up this month. Um, this has been at a 5% for many, many years of the total gross receipts, uh, and within, inside the city limits billed by Pacific Core. And we receive those, obviously, with the, uh, data centers being some large users. That number is very large. Um, that, uh, this 1448, uh, gives us a 90-day, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, 90 days?
Nine months.
Excuse me, nine months, I'm sorry, nine months extension, 5%. We can open it up anytime, uh, during that nine-month period, uh, for adjustments, or we can solidify, uh, some other kind of term. So it just gives us a lot of flexibility right now. I think I mentioned this a few minutes ago, what might, uh, be considered as we move, uh, on down the year, and what might be possible, uh, to adjust that for some additional opportunities to do some good things for the community. So please keep that in mind. Any questions about the extension for the Pacific Power franchise agreement, Resolution 1448?
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1448?
Um, this is Counselor Youngman. I will make a motion or movement to approve Resolution Number 1448. Resolution is...
Thank you. Okay, um, is there a second to that motion?
This is Gail, I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve and second, uh, Resolution Number 1448, granting an extension of Pacific Power franchise agreement. Um, again, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchison?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappy?
Aye.
Theresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes Aye as well. Motion 1448 passes. Next on our agenda is Resolution 1449, extending Resolution Number 1440, authorizing the city of Primeville to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of COVID-19. Jared Reed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Jared Reed, City Attorney. Uh, the resolution we've brought up tonight is the resolution that we've looked at pretty much at the end of every month since March. Uh, the reason we, we look at this resolution every 30 days is that we reanalyze whether it is still needed. Uh, currently, the COVID-19 pandemic, although it may not seem as if it is as prevalent in the news as it once was, it is still a state emergency. It's been declared a state emergency, it's still been declared a county emergency and a national emergency. Um, therefore, it is staff's recommendation that we continue this resolution so that we can continue to efficiently mitigate, uh, the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in particular, be eligible in the future for any potential, uh, programs, either, whether those be federally, state, or even county. Um, many of you know that there, there is a special session of the Oregon Legislature coming up very soon. COVID-19 is one of the main agenda items on that special session, and I believe an additional, um, legislative package is also working its way through the National Congress. So because of all those reasons, um, we have presented Resolution 1449 for your consideration.
Questions? I, I do have one concern, and that is that we, when we look at the timing, we will go be more than 30 days if we go to the second meeting of next month. So we need to address that because we'll have a, a gap in, in our weeks, so...
That's true. The 30, the 30-day timeline is actually more of a, of a guideline than a specific deadline. Um, actually, our code doesn't have a deadline. We have kind of done a self-imposed, give or take 30-day review period. Uh, and, you know, sometimes it falls a little above, sometimes it falls below. But that's where that 30 days, so I'm sorry I said that. But technically, we've just, as a policy, decided to review it every two council meetings, whether than, rather than having an undefined time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1449? Ending Resolution Number 1448.
This is Counselor Hutchison, I'll, a motion to approve Resolution 111449.
Thank you, Janet. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, this is Counselor Beebe.
Thank you, Jason. All right, we have a motion with a second to approve Resolution Number 1449, extending Resolution Number 1440, authorizing the city of Primeville to efficiently minimize or mitigate COVID, the effects of COVID-19. Any questions, concerns? Call for a roll call vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchison?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappy?
Aye.
Theresa Rumble?
Aye.
And mayor votes Aye as well. So what, Resolution Number 1449 passes. We'll move on to Resolution Number 1450, approving an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT regarding, regarding for Central Oregon curb ramps. Uh, Ja, Scott Smith?
Hi, Mayor, Council, your street superintendent, Scott Smith. So, James, can you pull up the, the map that was part of this? Um, ultimately, what this is, is kind of repercussions of ODOT's lawsuit regarding, um, unsafe ADA ramps. So this, um, project has no physical monetary, um, impacts to the city of Primeville. It's addressing, um, new curb ramps at North Gardner Road, Madder's Highway, Studebaker Drive and Madder's Highway, Northwest 9th Street, Dotson Drive, Marcuson Drive, Bridge and Lane, 6th Street, and Locust, um, in connection with 3rd Street. There is a, a map that is, um, part of this resolution. Uh, like I say, no monetary, physical impacts to the city of Primeville. This is, um, by all means, providing ODOT, um, access to any city right-of-way where, you know, the, all of these curb ramps are on right-of-way, but to reconstruct them appropriately, a contractor may have to encroach on city right-of-way. So we, uh, we would be giving them the right to, um, utilize our right-of-way to construct these. If, uh, through the project, ODOT, uh, gets to the point where they have to secure additional right-of-way to construct these ramps, um, once the project's over, that additional right-of-way would be deeded over at no cost to the city. For, uh, you know, the lifespan of these ramps are considered to be 20 years. So, um, once again, primary concern is providing ODOT, um, access to our right-of-way if necessary to, um, reconstruct these ADA ramps. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council members? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1450? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution number 1450?
This is Teresa. I'd move to approve 1450 as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jason, thank you. Teresa, thank you. So we have a motion with a second to approve resolution number 1450 approving an IGA with ODOT regarding the, regarding for central Oregon curb ramps. Again, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Jason Beebe? Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman? Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Pappke? Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well.
So the motion passed?
So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's it for the resolutions that we have on our agenda?
And Mayor, if I may interject at this moment, I believe the next agenda item is our second visitor's appearances and request, and pursuant to resolution 1441 executive order 2016, we normally have this part of the meeting in regards to public comment that's been submitted prior to the deadlines that we've made, and I know that we have a few public comments here tonight. However, I would note that at our first round of visitors appearances and requests, we did have Ms. Pettyjohn, which I believe is still on the line, and I think in the hustle and bustle of us talking about other issues, we may have not recognized her to speak at all. So I think she may still be on the line, and perhaps she might want to address what she wanted to address.
Thank you. Amy, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I did not, I apologize for not giving you the opportunity to speak.
Oh. I wondered, I was like, am I supposed to go?
Did you have additional comments you wanted to make relative to your request for us?
Um, yes, one moment here. Now you caught me off guard. And let's see, okay. So I did submit a PowerPoint. I don't know if you guys had a quick chance to look at it or not. But I hope you did have a chance. So I wanted to talk about Black Lives Matter and what we should be doing about it. And first of all, I don't represent Black Lives Matter as a group. I'm just a concerned community member, and, but I did notice at the rallies that the counter protesters to Black Lives Matter kept on saying, "Go home." Well, I am home. This is my town, and I do support Black Lives Matter, and I feel that killing unarmed people is wrong, no matter their race. Our country is currently having a conversation about race that is hard and painful, to realize that we have not come as far as we would like to think. I feel like this is a great opportunity to look at improving our community. Our little town recently made it into Time Magazine, which I thought was cool, not necessarily for the reason we made it, but hey, we got recognized. So what are the demonstrations about? Police have killed in 2015 104 unarmed black men, four people. That is nearly two people per week, and that seems really high. The national statistics are shocking. In the state of Oregon, we have only approximately 3% of the total population as black, yet they're killed by the police at a much higher rate than 3%. We don't have many black members in our community, and frankly, we're pretty white. I think our new census this year is going to show that we're getting a little more diverse, but you know, we're working on it. And I think it's great that we haven't had any problems currently in our community as far as police violence and having unarmed people killed. Go us! So, but that being said, I don't see why we cannot proactively work to keep it that way, and look at this as a way to improve our community as a whole. So as far as Blue Lives Matter, I will say this is absolutely true, and I want our police to be safe in their jobs and be able to do their jobs in a safe manner. So what should we do? Well, my first thought was to look at our laws, but apparently you guys were way ahead of me on this, and Mr. Forrester apparently met with the city attorney, and they already went over and confirmed that we don't have any racist laws on the books, which I think is fantastic. So the next thing on the list is Campaign Zero. I found this information online, and I thought it was a good spot to start. And so the first thing on the list is to, it's a 10-step item, program that they have for Campaign Zero, and the first item is to end broken windows policing. What the heck does that mean? That's a good question. So only 5% of all arrests in America are for violent crimes. Meanwhile, the vast majority of arrests are for low-level offenses that pose no threat to public safety. Police departments should decriminalize and de-prioritize enforcement of these issues, and cities should be scaling up the role of mental health providers, substance abuse counselors, and other community-based responses to these issues that are more effective and do not expose communities to police violence. What the heck does that mean for us? I don't know about you, but when I drive through town and see the police having stopped someone for what I assume is probably a traffic violation, I regularly see more than two police cars. Recently, I was headed out of town, and I was coming up to the roundabout, and I saw a city police car, a sheriff, and the state police all having one car pulled over. I'm hoping it was for just a traffic violation, but do we really need three separate entities for a traffic stop? It seems a bit excessive. I also feel that having more mental health and social workers on staff for calls that the police receive would be helpful. Let's be honest, police get called on on lots of problems that are not really appropriate, things including mental health, minors who are out of control, people having, you know, suicidal thoughts. These are things that I don't feel that the police are necessarily trained for, and where having a mental health counselor or a social worker on staff that would be able to come and assist them would be of benefit. This next one, I think we've already accomplished, end for profit policing. Police departments should not be allowed to profit from aggressively ticketing and issuing fines and confiscating property from the community. This seems like a good plan to me, and it is my understanding that we don't have a municipal court, so our city does not benefit directly from tickets, et cetera. So that's a good one. So that's two that we were working on there. Limit the use of force. Research is clear, police departments with more restrictive use of force policies like banning chokeholds, de-escalation, and requiring de-escalation are substantially less likely to kill people. And the more restrictive use of force policies are safer for officers, too. Yet many police departments still have not adopted these policies, and most states do not have laws passed requiring them to. So let me put it this way. So when I talked to one of my family members, he works in an elder care facility as a social worker. He works with people who have Alzheimer's, dementia, and other mental health problems. As he puts it, if he choked someone and they died, he would not only be fired, he would be in jail for murder. So I think that it's important that we look at the use of force and what is reasonable. Police officers and law enforcement are not the only ones that have to deal with the public that are behaving outrageously and being problematic, and they should not be given a free pass just because of that. Currently, it's the only job where you can say, "Oops, I accidentally killed someone today." So I'm not saying that they shouldn't be held to standards, I'm saying that they should be held to the same standards that we hold other members in highly confrontational jobs to. The next step is demilitarization. The federal law 1033 program allows the transfer of military weapons to police departments, including grade-made launchers and tanks. Departments that receive more of these weapons are more likely to kill. Does a police department really need military-grade weapons? I totally understand bulletproof vests, good helmets, all that type of stuff. I'm all for that. But the problem with the fun toys is that they're fun, and once you have them, you want to use them.
Ms. Pettyjohn? Ms. Pettyjohn? I hate to interrupt, but are you almost done with the list? We only have a few minutes on the public comment.
I will, I will go as quickly as I can.
No, I already did address that, because I don't think we have any tanks or grenades at the city.
Okay. So body cameras is the next step. Our police have already done that, so that's good. Independent investigations. Apparently, this is already a statewide standard, so that's excellent. So we have three out of the 10 to start with. Training, we can all do our jobs better, and more training to learn how to do them better is always beneficial. Community oversight, in this case, I would like to see that during the hiring process for police officers and law enforcement, that we have a minority person on the hiring team. Fair police union contract. I believe that they should have a union, and that they should be able to negotiate, but I would like to make sure that it's a fair and reasonable one. So I feel like we're off to a good start. We have three out of the 10 to start with, so that's a good point. So I would like us to have a conversation, which it sounds like we're going to, you guys have already planned for that in the next 30 days, to improve this and move forward, and hopefully have a better community.
And we look forward to having you at that committee if you're available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would just, in light of everything that's happened, and I know you read some wonderful comments, but I would just like to, both as a council member and a citizen of Primeville, commend Chief Cummins, every one of his officers, his plan for not only just everyday policing and keeping our community safe, the interactions that our police have with our community, the presence they have, the positive presence they have. I think it overlooked, and I think they get overlooked because they've almost become commonplace, because he does such a great job. And I'm proud of our police force and what they do. Are we perfect? No, but I think we definitely need to make sure we lift up some of the awesome things that have happened under Dale's leadership, and what he's done with his officers and his staff, and I just want to thank him for everything.
Jeff, thank you for your comment. Yes, that ought to be, that needs to be shared.
And I'll just say, Jeff, city manager Steve Forrester, I will say councillor Pappke that I think there is always room to improve. Continuous improvement is part of our culture, and I also would say that I think as we can educate and learn from different points of view, that's very important, but also I think we have the opportunity to educate what accreditation means, and what kind of training that our public safety officers go through. I think it's going to be an eye-opening opportunity for both sides of this issue. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Reminder, we are now in visitors appearances and requests, and as a reminder, pursuant to resolution number 1441 and executive order 20-16, other than public hearing, public comment is limited to written test comments provided to the city council by mail or email prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the scheduled council meeting. And accordingly, I will ask our city recorder for any such comments submitted, and in fact, she submitted two to me today. So I will, first one is a little longer. Good evening, fellow Primevillers. My name is Aaliyah Fern, I hope I pronounced that correctly. I am working with a small group of fellow Primeville citizens on a new initiative we called Prideville, or Primeville Prime. We will be holding a safe and family-friendly Pride March this weekend on Sunday, June 28th, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. around downtown Primeville to present to our community that we, as self-identified members of the LGBTQ+ Allies community in Primeville, are calling on our neighbors, friends, and local government, and the townspeople to unite in a message against hate and discrimination of all kinds towards members of our own community and visitors to our town. The specific aims of our demonstration and the work that commences are as follows. Proclamation from the city council stating Primeville zero tolerance for hate and commitment to inclusivity, greater diversity and representation within city of Primeville and Crip County leadership, reducing barriers to participation such as city council positions open to those with addresses outside city limits. Ongoing and additional training for city employees such as police department on inclusion, culture, awareness, and civic engagement. Prioritize restorative justice across agencies and community partners in training, policy, and practice. Increased mental health support for all community members to include mental health professionals embedded with first responders. Equal enforcement of all laws and review/revision of antiquated or discriminatory practices. Cultural and educational events that build awareness and appreciation for Primeville's diversity, such as guest speakers hosted at public forums, living library events at school. We invite you as a council and as individuals to support us in our vision and mission to enact tangible change in our community towards the goals of equity and inclusion, helping Primeville advance as a leading model community in central Oregon. The first step that you can take tonight as a council is to support Primeville and the Prideville by issuing the following proclamation we have drafted. And the proclamation that they are proposing, or that was proposed to us, is, whereas the people of varying gender, identity, sexual orientation, race, color, ethnicity, religion, national origin, disability, sex, age, and veteran status are our family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who contribute meaningfully to our community. Whereas Prideville Month in Primeville and events associated therewith celebrating pride in our community and its diversity may grow to be a part of our beloved and inclusive fabric of Primeville. Whereas it is the great privilege of the Primeville City Council to leverage community efforts to build a more equitable, diverse, supportive, and inclusive community for all Primeville residents, we, the Primeville City Council, ask all citizens of our beloved town to support events, movements, and individuals that are working to increase unity, equity, and a collective voice for all. Now therefore, we, the Primeville City Council, to hereby proclaim our commitment to seize every opportunity and call upon ourselves and the people of Primeville to eliminate prejudice, discrimination, and hate everywhere it exists, and to celebrate the great diversity of the American people. Movement goals, and that's the proclamation as stated, or as presented to us to consider. Continuing on with movement goals, requests, hopes, expectations, demands, what do we want to change items. Proclamation from the city council stating Primeville zero tolerance for hate and commitment to inclusivity, greater diversity in representation within city of Primeville and Crip County leadership, reducing barriers to participation such as city council positions open to those with addresses outside city limits. Personal note, I don't think we can do that legally. Heading back to the list, next on the list is ongoing and additional training for city employees such as police department on inclusion, cultural awareness, and civic engagement. Prioritize restorative justice across agencies and community partners in training, policy, and practice. Increased mental health support for all community members to include mental health professionals embedded with first responders. Equal enforcement of all laws and review/revision of antiquated or discriminatory practices. And lastly, cultural and educational events that build awareness and appreciation for Primeville's diversity, such as guest speakers hosted at public forums, living library events at school. Next comment comes from Darci Bedorca. Hi Lisa Mayor Uffelman and city council, as a longtime member of Primeville Crip County community, and someone who has worked for years to raise up voices of youth, the poor, and the marginalized people. and the marginalized people, I am adding my full support to this effort from the Prineville Pride community. I encourage you to seize the opportunity to step forward boldly to proclaim that hate is not welcome in our town. The past few weeks have made clear that we collectively have some work to do. As we sort through recent events, I know we will find wounds we are capable of healing and holes in the fabric of our community that we have the tools to mend. If we face it together, we will rise stronger as a result. Crip County strong. Please take this opportunity to lead the way. Thank you for your time and your service, Darcy Bedorfa. Those are all the public statements that I have. Lisa Morgan, did you have any others that I did not see?
That was it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor?
That is, yes.
I was approached by a citizen today to make a comment on their behalf. One of their concerns is 2nd Street from the Gee's Restaurant down to the stop sign on Deer. It seems, I was actually at one of the businesses in that area, and they told me that they live on that street, and there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. Harwood and 2nd seem to be a very potentially dangerous intersection, and so he asked that I mention that there are some concerns with the citizens in that area, with that street. He did mention, you know, a possible resolution of maybe a stop sign at Harwood and 2nd. So anyways, I thought I would throw that out there, and mention that on his behalf.
Thank you. All right, we can pass that on to the chief?
Scott Smith.
Scott Smith, pardon me.
Yeah. So I think Scott's on the line now, so I think Scott got that information.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council for this evening?
I'm sorry, what?
I just asked if there are any additional comments from the council this evening.
Sorry, I got kids and puppies.
Well, our agenda is completed, so if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn. This is Teresa Rumble.
Thank you, Teresa. Is there a second to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jason. And I'm just going to call for a general everyone's voice vote. Say aye if you're ready to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for this evening.